Good evening and welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, February 19th. May I have the roll call, please?
Ken Connaughton.
Here.
Salem Derby. Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Bill Lynch. Tom Peet. Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsey Rothschild. Here. Owen Zerris.
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any minutes to approve, so we will skip over that. Now we have public speak, and before anyone gets up to public speak, I would like to ask Dan Gilbert of the Rank Choice Voting Committee to provide an update. It'll be brief, and then we will go into public speak, and you can all queue up. You have 30 seconds.
Oh, great. Free. Hi, thanks for asking me to come. My name's Dan Gilbert, and I am now the Chair of the Rank Choice Voting Ad hoc Committee, which is seven people, including Barbara, our city clerk. And so we had our first meeting last week. Barbara's the clerk. They elected me to be the Chair of the committee. And our next meeting is March 19th at 6:00 PM in this building. We're gonna attempt to meet the third Thursday of each month, monthly. And I don't have a lot more to report, other than we do have some, we have a lot of sample ballots to look at, we have a lot of ordinances from other municipalities to look at. Both Barbara and I have had a conversation with our vendor, LHS Associates, this week. It's, as we expected, we're probably gonna have a, have a expense of about $8,000 for technical equipment, software license stuff. That's a one-time expense, and then an $800 annual fee for that. So, so that's what we're looking at. That doesn't include anything else, any kind of voter education or other materials, but we'll be talking about that in the committee, too. And we'll be writing the ordinance. And I think one of the biggest decisions that's gonna have to be made on the committee is a lot of the details, which have a relatively minor effect on the election, but how we deal with spoiled ballots, how we deal with skipped rankings, overvotes, things like that. So fortunately Jeff, the President of LHS, is very knowledgeable about all that and is interested in communicating with the committee and helping us to make those decisions. But it was, everyone was there the first meeting, and it was awesome.
Great.
Any questions, or?
I, I just have a couple.
Yeah.
Well, not really. So, your meetings, with the exception of the first one, going forward, they will be recorded.
Yes.
Barb, I assume you're gonna do the minutes. And will those be published on the city website, or someplace like any other committee?
Yep.
Okay. And then what we'll do, Dan, is we will put you down understanding committees going forward. And so when we ask for committee reports, we'll turn to you, and you can attend on those days.
Okay.
All right.
As long as you let me know, I'll show up.
Absolutely. All right.
Go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we, now, we have anyone who would like, from the public, to come up and speak for anything that is not currently on the agenda, or in the public hearing that we're gonna be having in about 10 minutes? Please come up to the podium now, state your name and your address.
So if you can't be regarding the plastic ordinance?
It can be, because that is not on the agenda.
Oh.
Hello, my name is Jose Oscar Media Via. I wanna thank you guys for bringing this ordinance on the table to ban plastics. And I just, I prepared a few things that I just wanted to say really quick. Of course, we are all aware by now that microplastics are in our air, they're in our food, and they're in our water. That's, and, but what's not most commonly known is that single-use plastics can be degraded to compostable materials. Several different varieties of mushroom mycelium can eat plastics. The most popular is oyster mushroom mycelium. Larvae of the wax worms also eat plastics. Waste management can be reformed to use these biological solutions. Plastics can be made from different sources. One of the most impressive to me is from cactus, because the plants are perennial, which means it stays alive for a long time, and leaves can be periodically harvested. Seaweed, avocado pits, cornstarch, hemp, cassava roots are also good sources of plastic replacements. When water is overflowing from the tub, you don't grab the mop and get to work to clean up the mess until after you've turned off the faucet. So we need to do the same thing with petroleum-based plastics. Recycling petroleum-based plastics and reintroducing them into an irresponsible market is not the solution when the public consumers obviously just constantly litter. I pick up litter often, and it doesn't matter how often I clean up the streets, or how well I clean it up. It could be twice as worse, just in one week's time. Chemicals from plastics have a negative impact on human DNA, are anti-testosterone, and contribute to cancer. Scientists have said that we could end life on Earth with plastic pollution alone, since even earthworms cannot grow where microplastics are contaminating the soil. So I'm glad that we're introducing this legislation, and my quick thought about the legislation, from what I've read, is that I feel that the, the penalty in price range is way too low. I've seen certain ordinance being passed in beaches, for example, where they charge $300 for people who littered their cigarette butts. So especially when it comes to trying to prevent industry from using plastics, I think that the price range should be a little more than 50 or 100 bucks. And ultimately, I believe that we need to introduce legislation to demand that the plastic industry transitions to ecologically sane products. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public would like to come up and speak on anything that is not on the agenda?
Hi.
Your name, and your name and address.
My name and address. My name is PJ Niver, and I'm at 124 Park Street in East Hampton. Thank you. Yay, for doing this. Thank you so much. It's, I think that it's a really good time to do it, for the past two years, since China stopped accepting recyclables. I also think that it'll be good for our economy, because more stringent laws may be coming down soon statewide. And so if we do this now, we'll have a head start, and we also have a lot of resources in our area. We have, that money from the bag share can help us transition into, and help businesses transition into reusable bags. People have done canvassing with businesses as well, and we have the Center for Eco-Technology as well, that can help us with composting. I have some comments on the proposal, and so I'd like to give them to you, and have them go to the ordinance. Let's go. Thank you. I'm giving each of you one. I know I'm losing paper.
If you have extra, if you have extra copies, we have some councilors who aren't here. That'd be great.
Okay. I'm gonna make 10, then I'll have 9.
I'll make sure they get them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Sure. And I said more than I did say.
Do you have the ability to email this to our city clerk?
I can do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? And I'm just, a caution, we have a public hearing in five minutes, so if you could keep it to a reasonable two or three hours, would be very helpful.
I think, so my, my name is Vincent Corsfellow. I live in East Hampton, and I own a business in East Hampton. I'm here to speak. I'm a little bit out of my comfort zone, but in any case, about the plastic ordinance, which I think the previous two people spoke about. So, at my shop, I don't use any plastic bags. I wrap all of my meat in paper, in wax paper. And I think that an ordinance, as it's written right now, seems, seems arbitrary, seems that it wouldn't really resolve any issues that we have. Jose talked about microplastics. So for example, here, I brought a little prop here. This would be banned, right? This wouldn't be banned. That's coated with plastic, though, right? Even though it's paper. This wouldn't be banned. People put their dog food in there, and then they throw that into the landfill, right? This wouldn't be banned. This wouldn't be banned. So I can't give a plastic bag, but Amazon can send this to every single item that I get from them, right? So I guess what I'm trying to illustrate is that if you wanna do a plastics ban, I'm not sure how a city can, can alone solve this problem. We don't even have a landfill, so if the issue is about the landfill being filled up too quickly, like, we don't even have a landfill that we can really have, have control over. And so it just really, to me, puts a burden on the consumer, and puts a burden on the, on the business owners, for something that's not really, you know, gonna do much, because, yeah, we get rid of these, but all of these are still existing, right? All these are part of it. And what I see as a bigger issue, particularly concerning the, the landfills, is the, the composting, right? So how much of the food is wrapped in plastic, and ends up being tossed, whether it's from the grocery store, or from, you know? And that is a bigger volume, that's a bigger volume, bigger weight, and a bigger issue. And so what I would propose is that, when you bring this, I assume you're bringing it into committee, and you'll talk about it, that you look at a bigger, a bigger picture, right? And a bigger ordinance that is, is more in the way of education of the public, incentivizing people to, you know, to switch to compostable. But we all know that even the compostable, like, single-use packaging, the problem's already there, right? A lot of it, like this, for example, a lot of these things that I've seen, and I've looked, you know, to see what we can find, they're coated with plastic, right? So they're not compostable, they're not any better for the environment, they're not even, they're probably even worse in the sense of, like, creating microplastics, because this stuff wears away, and then, you know? So I just wanted to say, I feel very strongly about it, that while I, you know, I've spent my whole life trying to reduce my use of plastic, and in my business, I do it, too. I think that, like, arbitrary, you know, what was it, straws, polystyrene, and bags, you know, we'll just switch over to this. You know, for example, you know, this is a styrofoam cup that would be banned, but the paper cup that's coated in plastic would be perfectly acceptable still, right? No? No. Okay. This is polystyrene. This is not. I don't think either one, I think they're both gonna be thrown away, or if it's recycled, it's only 8% of plastic is getting recycled. So I just would invite you all to consider something a little, a little more progressive, as opposed to something that's, that feels good. You know, and I'll leave you just with an anecdote of, of a customer came in. I have iced coffee at my shop, and we have, like, these nice plastic cups with the nice plastic fans, and then I, so, but I also offer people, if you wanna drink it here, I'll put it in a glass for you. There'll be no waste, you can drink it, and all set. And she said, "No, thank you, I'd like to take it with me." So I gave it to her in the cup. And then she said, "Do you have a straw?" And I said, "Of course I do, I have a box of black straws." I don't go through maybe very many of them, but it was a plastic straw. And she looked at it and said, "Are you gonna switch to paper straws? This is bad for the environment." And so, you know, my point on that is, you know, even though it's anecdotal, I understand, you know, this, this plastic issue is, is much greater than, like, the styrofoam or the plastic bags. And the volume that's going into the environment by reducing it in our city, or in every city, pales in comparison to what's shown up. So if, if, I would just invite you to consider something a little, little more progressive, a little more, you know, long-term. Because while I appreciate the good intentions in, in reducing it, you know, like, it just, it, our problem isn't gonna be solved by the consumer, right? The consumer choices, or the consumer being forced, or being punished for, you know, using this, it's, it's gonna be done on a deeper level, and, you know, we can, we could send a message that way. And as someone else said, I think, and I think I knew this, that the, the state is actually considering some kind of ban statewide. So why would we spend our energy, you know, with something that's gonna be potentially there, anyway? So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How many more people wanna speak? We could either give you a couple of minutes, and then go into the public hearing, but if there's a lot of you, then we may hold off until after the public hearing. Show of hands, just one person needs to speak? Two. I don't, I'll be very quick. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So I'm Connie Dawson, I live on Knight Avenue in East Hampton. I just want to say, I agree with the fact that this ban is not going to solve all our problems. However, I think that one of the things that we need to do as a community is increase everyone's awareness of these issues, and I think that this kind of a ban could help us with that. And then I think that as a city, we should institute thinking about becoming more of a zero-waste community, and, and there, I know that Boston is working on that, and there are other communities in Massachusetts that are working on that, but that's a much bigger sort of systemic approach to dealing with what is obviously a major, huge problem. So I think, I don't think it should be an either-or discussion. I think that having this ban, so that people will start thinking about, "What am I doing here? Why am I throwing away all this stuff that I, that I don't even, that I use for 12 seconds, and then I get rid of it?" I mean, I think that part of it is just raising people's awareness, and that's why I support this ban.
I'm only, I'll be short, even though I am short. Annette Siegel, Mother Street. I'm in favor of some type of a plastic ban. I understand what Vincent was saying, but I think if we start off little, things get better. I did this for the Chili Fest. I, last year, we were using plastic water bottles, and I said, "That's no good." This year, we had carboys with little paper cups, and we didn't have all this plastic that had to go into recycling. So yes, every little bit helps. See my little, you know, Four Ocean little bracelets? And so anything we can do to start off a little bit is gonna be a big help. And yes, eventually, maybe 10 years, it'll work to be bigger. But I think if we can do a little bit at a time, I think that's the way to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Annette.
Thank you.
All right. We now have the public hearing. Go ahead. Oh. Did the council rest?
I move that we open the public hearings. Second? For this proposal.
Motion is second to open the public hearings. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Dan, we have some finance issues, that supplemental appropriation, interdepartmental transfer, I will hand it over to you.
The first one is a interdepartmental, supplemental appropriation for $81,069 from free cash to an account for our Step 9 pay increases. If you all recall, those of you on the council, before, we had the Collins Report done, which was a study of our pay plan, and we did all of the grades. So, and that changed a lot of the, the pay salary scales. To make a long story short, we have a new high step, and those, and a lot of our people who work for us stay with our, very, it's very nice that they do, stay and work for us for a long time, like Barbara La Bombard, and we're very grateful for that. But the Step 9, what used to be Step 9 increases, they never got this increase. So this is a way for them to catch up, and I'd like the mayor to expand on what I said, if she would. Committee voted 3 to 0 to, of course, approve these pay increases. One-time pay increases, I believe. Right?
Good evening. As Chair of the Finance Committee, just said, Dan Rist, this is really the final step of a process we started a couple of years ago, looking at what our employees, specifically within City Hall, are making, how it compares, freshening up and updating job descriptions. I will say that, other than cost of living increase, this particular group of employees have not gotten a raise, and now what has been nine years. And they continue to serve the city several, for several years. While this also addresses the steps and, and increasing the number of steps, which I feel is a strong motivator to retain employees with a lot of municipal experience, it also goes down and corrects some of the gaps on, on the lower steps and grades, to get folks on really a professional path to be more holistic municipal employees in the various departments, including the city clerk and her assistant. So I, you know, I asked for this appropriation, really as the last step in a very long conversation about pay equity in our city, and that we have a very, a group of employees who are the backbone of our operations, who don't have a voice at any collective bargaining table, and report, quite honestly, to different party, different bodies in the government.
Thank you. Questions?
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public?
No statements. Okay. Then I move that the full council approve the following appropriation. $81,069 to be appropriated from free cash for the following different account lines. Audit Department salary line items, $3,218. City clerk salary line items, $4,569. Planning Department salary line items, $18,713. Building Ops salary line items, $4,245. Police salary line item, $8,102. Dispatch salary line items, $11,100. Fire salary line item, $716. DPW administration line items, $8,863. Engineering salary line item, $6,729. Cemetery salary line items, $1,897. Tree overtime? Is that OT, OT line item, $360. Health Department salary line items, $500. Council on Aging salary line items, $1,552. Recreation salary line items, $6,285. Park salary line items, $4,220. For the following purpose, to put all pay plan employees on the new UMass-Collins Center Study pay scale, approved by City Council as of 7/1/19, and to increase one step on 1/1/20. All those who received increases, 7/1/19 to 12/31/19, will not go up a step on 1/1/20. All those who were at 9 on the pay plan prior to fiscal year 19, and had no steps in prior years, went up a step, 7/1/19, and on 1/1/20. That was a motion. Second?
Motion is second to approve the supplemental appropriation to fund the pay and step increases for pay plan employees. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Motion passes.
The next interdepartmental transfer is from the Reserve Fund for $9,600 to pay for election and other positions. Every time we have an election, it costs almost $10,000, so we need to remember that. This is to cover the cost of the March 31st election, which is the special election for the Senator. Am I correct, Barbara? So that's why we pay for it. We kind of have to do this, or the people can't vote. So I guess it's a no-brainer. I have nothing further, except that it's kind of mandatory that we pay for our election.
Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the public have any questions or statements? Okay.
Okay, the amount, I, I move that the City Council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested is to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, $9,600. To be transferred to election and regular other positions, $9,000. Election and regular computer services, $600. For the following purpose, to pay election worker and computer programming costs for the March 31st, 2020 special state election, to fill the Senator and General Court vacancy. Second?
Motion and a second to approve the $9,600 interdepartmental transfer for the special state election to fill the state senate vacancy. Any discussion? I hope people come out and vote. True enough. We're spending money on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes.
The next two items are Cannabis Stabilization Fund and Tax Rate Stabilization Fund. We had considerable discussion in the finance, and we approved both of these, 3 to 0, and I am very happy the mayor set them up. First, the Cannabis Impact Stabilization Fund. We receive from the cannabis retailers an impact fee, as per contract. That impact fee cannot be used in the general fund to pay for anything. It can be paid for, it can be used for items that are designated as, that impact the community because of the retail store, especially education items, like setting up an education program at the high school. But what was interesting, and the mayor is very innovative about this, we have police details, we have fire details that are required because of this. Those budget lines can be supplemented by this account, reducing our need to use property taxes to pay for that. We could use this. So, and I know the mayor's looking at all of those, I think we talked about One Ferry Street and the infrastructure improvement. If we're paying for that, that's right where Ensa is. So those are the kinds of things this stabilization fund can pay for. Why do we need stabilization funds? We cannot spend this impact fee directly this year. We cannot pay for it until the DOR certifies that it is, exists. It is considered, I'll say, the surplus revenue. It becomes free cash in the fall, once we are certified by the DOR, and that particular stabilization fund can then accept this money. But we can't do it till the fall. Same thing with the Tax Rate Stabilization Fund. We could move free cash into it this year that it's already been certified. So if we have some at the end of the year, we could put it there. But we can't put excess revenue in that stabilization fund, the Tax Rate Stabilization Fund, until it is certified. So most likely, these stabilization funds will impact FY '21 budget needs, which is starting July 1st, 2021. They won't necessarily impact, like, the Tax Rate Stabilization Fund won't necessarily impact that, unless the mayor can find, and the auditor can find a way to put some money in from this year's budgets. But again, even though we all know there's cannabis money coming in, the impact money coming in, we can't touch it until the DOR says, "Yeah, you have this money." That's how free cash is established every year. Okay? Anybody have any questions? JP?
So the money's coming in, in quarterly payments, or monthly payments? Annual payments?
The impact one.
The impact, talking about the impact. Yeah, the impact money is coming in on, at an annual payment. Can't be used until it gets put somewhere and put in, in the stabilization fund, it would be the place that we would establish that we could put it. What other options did we have to put the money someplace else? Is there any other location or use?
Two things. I don't think we can, mayor, respond to that, but we still can't use it until it's certified.
Right.
Right.
Correct. But there is, Val told me, there is a general law that can be accepted, which will allow us to put these future impact funds directly into stabilization. Am I correct on that?
Maybe. So...
I'm close.
So, yes, all the right words are there. I just wanted to be over them. So, first, and then I'm gonna hand it over to, yes, so we could, we could accept the impact fee, and, and just, it sits, and is certified as free cash, and it stays in free cash, and is spent via a free cash plan. Liability-wise, that is not a good idea, and I created a stabilization account. One, we want that money designated in a stabilization account, it helps us with our tax rate. But also, impact fees are very specifically defined within those host-community agreements.
Right.
So we want to be able to track in a separate fund what those agreements state, and what, where every dollar is spent, and that it is attached to the amount to the host-community agreement that came in, their ENSA. So ENSA is $722,000. It will, I will ask for permission to put it in that stabilization account this fall. Everything after that will go into the stabilization account, and there are four buckets: education, public infrastructure, public safety. And we have to attach, educate, we have to attach each expenditure to one of those buckets. I think that doing, it would be easy over the course of time to lose track of that money in the general fund, and even to free cash, and it is more likely that over the course of time, we'll all forget what we're supposed to do with it, and the stabilization is a great tool. There are some communities that are just led... There are some communities that are just letting it come in, it sits, it's certified as free cash and it's spent. It's not that that can't happen or can't be tracked, but there's an additional, you know, tax benefit for getting into a stabilization. And at that, at this point, I will shift to our auditor, Val Bernier.
Okay. See if I can remember all the questions you asked. First of all, this is a two-step process. So once we establish an impact stabilization account, then we need to pass legislation or accept a legislation that allows all of the fees, the impact fees in the future, to automatically go into the stabilization. So once, if this is approved, then we'll put in a request for the legislation that allows us to have the fees go directly to the stabilization account. And that legislation has to be accepted during the fiscal year prior to it happening. So this year, all revenue is considered general fund revenue unless otherwise legislated. So automatically, this seven hundred and twenty-two thousand becomes general fund revenue this year. So it will end up going to free cash. Now, if we were to leave it in free cash, yes, you could vote it into the different buckets you need to vote it in during the year, but if it's not all done by the end of the year, it goes away because at the end of the year, the books close again, you recertify your free cash into the next year. So the stabilization account allows you not only a place to keep it and roll it from year to year and accumulate it, but also a way to track it, keep it separate. I can set up separate revenue accounts that show which company each amount of money came from. We can use expenditure accounts that show us where the money was voted to, so we can track it. And then when we have to show where we spent it, we have it all, you know, the whole record there. So this is really a no-brainer. And then the other little piece to this is that stabilizations are allowed to keep their own interest. So once this money goes into the stabilization for the amount of time that it's in there, it will be collecting monthly interest.
Will it also help us with the bond rating in terms of, there's additional monies into our stabilization account for whatever time it's in the stabilization?
Yes. Plus, it adds a letter, another level of security in that you have to do a two-thirds vote to vote anything out of stabilization. So then anytime you want to use it for something, it would require a council vote.
Right.
So...
When you said the money goes away, that started to scare me first.
Well, what happens is every year, the general fund closes and...
Right. It just rolls over to free cash.
The expenditures get covered by the revenue, and if there's anything left over, over and above your deficits, it gets, it's certified as free cash. So it is possible, if you deficit spend and your expenditures are way more than your revenue, then it could go away.
Could go away, yeah.
Yes. So you want to set it aside.
Thank you. Appreciate the explanations.
Just to clarify, once we accept the legislation, the next, we accept the legislation this fiscal year before July, correct? And the next year, when we get another impact state fund from whatever, inside whatever retail, that can go directly into stabilization. It doesn't have to wait until it's certified.
Yes.
Because it's coming directly. So that's, that's a good thing.
Yes.
Because we get it in there right away.
Yes.
Because if it's put in free cash, who knows? Somebody may forget to move it.
Right. So we're gonna vote for a legislation that allows for the fee to automatically be diverted into the...
Fiscal year twenty-one.
Yes.
Val, when we're talking about the chapter forty, section, I think, five B, is that what we need to accept?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to accept that for each stabilization account, or once we accept it, then we can create stabilization funds? Or do we have to accept it for each one? So we need to accept, we need to do a vote for the tax rate stabilization fund separate from the cannabis stabilization? Like you can't just say, we accept this, therefore, we're gonna create a bunch of stabilization funds. We have to do one.
No, there are two different things.
We have to vote on them separately.
Yeah. This, this vote that we're doing is we're voting to take all cannabis impact revenue and automatically have it diverted into the stabilization account. There is no revenue stream that we're gonna devote into the tax stabilization. We're just going to use available funds. So for instance, if we don't have any more snow this winter and our deficit's only forty thousand dollars, yes, I hope, free cash from this year can be voted into the tax stabilization.
Okay.
If not, then next year, you know? But it doesn't have any other piece to it. There's no revenue stream that we're gonna dedicate to it.
Okay. Great. Dan?
I like to look at both of these, especially the tax rate stabilization fund, as a way of which we create a savings account.
Yes.
In that, they, once we put money into it, it can't be used to close the books. It can't be used to create, close a deficit. It's there. Like the other two stabilization accounts, which have two-point-five million or so in it, those are savings accounts that we could draw on with a two-thirds vote of the council, like we are doing for one of our upcoming appropriations. But we don't have to worry about those accounts being used for closing the books, and we don't have to worry about them being rolled over to free cash. They are constant. They always stay. Which is why I like this, because we put money in there, next year, we can put it in there, and if the mayor chooses, she can use it. Next fiscal year, twenty, twenty-two, you could use the tax rate stabilization if we have a lot of money in there to try and help with property tax, which is the goal. So this is just starting the process.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay.
If it's all right with the president, I'm gonna move both of these, one at a time. I have to do two separate ones.
Right. So my first question is, does any, we had been talking about the cannabis one. Does anybody have any specific questions about the tax rate one? Because that kind of got blended into the conversation.
Yes.
So what's, is there a plan? I understand with these stabilization funds, you can, you can essentially earmark various, with some exclusions, various income streams to go directly into them.
Only into the cannabis one. That's the only one that you can do if we accept the legislation. Tax rate stabilization fund requires an appropriation every time we move money into it, and it has to be existing funds. Like, we could do this year's free cash, because that's certified. Or we could transfer funds from another budget line in there if we so choose. But the only one that has an automatic capability after we accept the general law is the impact funds we get from the retail stores. That seven hundred and twenty-two thousand we got this year, if we get that next year, we don't, it goes right into it. We don't have to vote it in, because we're accepting the law. It automatically goes there. That'll happen next year. Does that answer your question?
Well, my reading of the, of the GL is that any stabilization fund, you can create automatic deposits into it with certain revenue streams.
I don't know that for sure, Valerie.
But that's not, but that's not the question. The question is, we're not doing that in this case. Is that...
I don't know if we can.
We're making, I believe we can, but that's another discussion we can have some other time. But we're just, we're making, we're just gonna be piecemeal, deposits into the tax rate stabilization fund as funds are available?
I would say that's true.
Yes, that, that's true. And, and the purpose behind this, this particular instrument, while we look at other, you know, exemptions or abatement or, or, you know, work-off programs, I like this particular tool is, one, is it, it encourages fiscal prudency in the executive branch, and also money put into this fund helps the entire taxpayer base. And we also don't go down an administrative rabbit hole of who checks what boxes and gets what exceptions or abatements. And that can be hazardous, and it can be time-consuming, and this is something more immediate for the taxpayers while we figure those processes out and unintended financial impacts and, and positive impacts. But to get everyone a little bit of relief with any, I don't wanna say extra dollars, but, you know, the snow and ice is, like, that account's a great example. So, you know, there's less scratching of the head of what to do with money not spent in a given year. And I also think it puts it first and foremost, and it keeps executive and legislative branch accountable for taxpayers to say, every time we have that kind of money, why didn't it go into that tax relief fund?
Excellent.
Thank you.
That's an answer.
Okay. So back to your original question, I would like two motions. Is that what you're gonna do? Okay.
First motion, I move that pursuant to the provisions of MGL chapter forty, section five B, the city of East Hampton establish a quotes cannabis impact fee stabilization fund, end quotes, for the purpose of funding cannabis impacts as described in community host agreements executed by the city of East Hampton.
Second?
That was a motion.
Motion is second to establish a cannabis impact fee stabilization fund. Any further questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Motion passes.
Second motion, I move that pursuant to the provisions of MGL chapter forty, section five B, the city of East Hampton establish a quotes tax rate stabilization fund for the purpose of funding instruments to reduce the city of East Hampton's tax rate.
Second?
Motion and a second to establish a tax rate stabilization fund. Is any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes.
Madam President, I move the public hearings be closed.
Second.
All right. Motion to close the public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Moving on. Communications from elected officials, boards, and committees, Counselor Riss.
I have a comment to make about the Community Preservation Act. Please bear with me. This is in defense of the Community Preservation Act and the CPA. As you all are aware, I'm a big supporter of the Community Preservation Act, and I'd like to take a moment to defend it for East Hampton, as there are whispers of dissent given our property tax increases this year. In short, it is the single most prominent reason the quality of life has improved in East Hampton since its creation in the year two thousand. The projects the CPA has funded in conjunction with local and/or state-matching funds add up to millions of dollars. The funds could not possibly be drawn from the general fund if the CPA did not exist. If not for the CPA, East Hampton would not have been able to assist with the rail trail, build a boardwalk, preserve Old Town Hall and other city history, build affordable housing and protect open space, protect our aquifer, and create new parkland. When the law changed, we were also able to add improvement to existing parks, ballfields, playgrounds, et cetera, and even build a football field. The CPA does not take, does not take on these projects by itself, as grants and local funds almost always are required, and these grants are not available without matching local funds. Indeed, the recent maintenance for Nanituck Pond was assisted by a forty thousand match from the Nanituck Pond Steering Committee. And the purchase of Mounton North Trailhead, we recently did, land, that land was assisted by the Kestrel Trust. Kestrel Trust. Soon, we hope to renovate our Old Town Hall second floor so our residents don't have to go to Northampton or Springfield to enjoy professional music, theater, and dance. The city space organization is working hard to match CPA funds it is grateful for. I say with all sincerity, sincerity, the reason that East Hampton is a desired place to live and a destination community for food and entertainment is most certainly because of the CPA and its great work. We do not have to sacrifice the continued improvement of the quality of life in East Hampton because we need to fix our schools or our public work infrastructure. It is not necessary. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else have any communications? Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, President. Yes, they, something with the people, they're doing fundraising. They need over thirty-five thousand dollars to go to Washington in April.
Don't have it.
No, but they have, they are doing fundraisers, and you can follow them in EHS with the people on Facebook. Please do, because they need our support, and I think they're, they're gonna do great. They're gonna represent not just East Hampton, they're gonna represent Massachusetts and Washington, and they deserve our support.
Counselor Gomez, do they have, did you say they have a GoFundMe page or some sort of an electronic?
You can go to the EHS with the people on Facebook and...
And make donations.
Yes, make donations there.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a quick question. I thought they had a supper or something coming up?
Yes, but I don't know, I don't have the date yet.
But there is an opportunity to go get a meal and contribute, I believe.
And it's, is, do we think that information would be on that website as well?
It's gonna be in the year, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Great. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to correspondence announcements of the president and vice president. The only thing I just want to mention is that commencing in the first meeting in April, first meeting in May, and the first meeting in August, we're gonna ask the school building committee to come and provide us a report.
Yeah.
And then going forward after August, we'll determine based on the key milestones how frequently we need to continue those meetings. But there's been a lot coming up to this point, especially with the change in the traffic and things, and we thought maybe two meetings to get the full comprehensive update going forward, and then in August, right before the schools starts again. That was the only announcement I had. Anything, anything else? Counselor Riss?
I just wanted to mention, Barbara, am I correct, that we started early voting?
Next Monday.
Next Monday starts early voting, and we should all vote in our primaries. Please vote. Saying this to the public. Vote.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. Mayor communications. Mayor LaChapelle?
Before I go into the, what's on the agenda, I would just say, also, with the school detours, in particular, the maps are on the website, and they are supposed to go into effect pending weather on the twenty-fourth of February. So even if you don't have a child, that goes to the middle school, please take a look, because it will affect that whole area of Park, Holly Circle, Button Road, South Street, and it kind of gives you the lay of the land. There will be signage. I've also gotten a couple of calls around elections and what will happen with traffic, and, and want to say that the traffic map that is on the website now and will be followed starting the twenty-fourth stays consistent. There will be signs for elections. You will, you, you vote in the exact same place, and the parking is a little different, but it's close to the building, and we're working out those details. But please vote. Vote where you always vote. And yes, there'll be a little construction at the middle school, but it is the place you belong to vote. So I didn't say that. That also will have additional maps and detour maps that we're working on for One Ferry Street, but also not too soon, not too far away, Route Ten. So with those construction projects. So if you would like to start biking in East Hampton and not driving, it's an excellent time to do so. Right? Okay. That's it. So tonight on, on the agenda and before you, I am asking, within one meeting, to allow us to refund a bond, basically refinance a bond to take advantage of the excellent interest rate. The savings to us, to the city, and also to the taxpayers would, would help reduce our debt limit by ninety-three thousand dollars and change. This is, there's MGL supporting. I've had both our financial advisor, our auditor, our treasurer, and our bond council review this. This came about on the suggestion of our financial advisor, who is helping us get our, our debt, the percent of our, our budget, our debt ratio down. We are now over ten percent because of the school bond, and that is okay, because it's so unusual and big, but it doesn't mean on other debt that we have, we shouldn't try to reduce it. This is a great opportunity. The MGL allows one approval in one meeting, basically to take advantage of the market. The interest rates are down right now, and there is no guarantee that they will be up or down if we wait, and this goes through committee. So I'm asking to move on that now. Our auditor, Val Bernier, is here. I mean, this is, this is a way, when we're talking about, you know, reducing tax liability on the taxpayers, this is one way to do it. This is a tried and true tool. It's good fiscal management, and it's, it's hard not to do it and look a taxpayer in the face, or myself in the mirror when I brush my teeth every morning, because I pay taxes.
Mayor, so what you're asking us to do is to allow you to go and bond at a lower interest rate and, and kind of retire some of the other bonds that we have out there to achieve ninety-plus thousand dollars. Is that an annual savings that we would have, is that a payment we would have been making over the life of the bond you want to retire?
It's a payment we would have made this year. And then it goes away, the, the payment, because it's wrapped up. I mean, it's not ninety-three thousand going forward. So there's immediate savings, and then there's long-term saving, like longer savings yet from the duration of the bond.
So we're not voting on a particular...
So we're not voting on a particular bond, we're both, we're voting on the ability for you to go and do this?
Yeah, there's some, there's one particular bond we're looking to refinance that we're within the ninety-day period that we can do that.
Okay, Councilor Riss?
My, my question was that bond, is that the high school bond we're refinancing? Is refinancing a proper term, just like, just so the public understands it, like what you do with your mortgage, you're refinancing this and you're gonna have a ninety-three thousand dollar immediate savings, and by refinancing at the lower interest rate too, because when we did this bond originally, I assumed the high school bond was higher rate, am I correct on that? Right? So this is saving us interest also over the long term, so we're saving money in a lot of ways.
Yes.
So for purposes of people viewing this, Val was nodding her head yes to what?
Right, and the mayor's backing up the auditor's yes, I didn't wanna interrupt Councilor Riss, but yes.
All in the affirmative.
Yes.
Sorry, I kept forgetting that.
Councilor Zerret?
Do you have a general idea how this may impact the tax rate? I'm assuming it's gonna impact in a positive manner?
It is, I would defer to the auditor to, if we know the exact impact, I mean, there are a lot of other factors, this helps.
So, this is Val Vernier, the auditor. This is the high school State House note, which is principal seven hundred thousand a year, and then interest, it goes down every year. This year, it would save us ninety-three thousand in principal and interest. Going forward, it stays at a ninety-three thousand savings until the bond is finished. This year, I think it's ninety-three thousand one hundred, and then it goes to ninety-three five, and, you know, but then it goes down, but it's always around ninety-three thousand in savings in excluded debt. So this is the debt that's added on to the tax rate after the two and a half percent that was our problem this year, that it went so high. So you can't say exactly how much it will impact the taxes, you could say ninety-three thousand, and then you also have some other older borrowings that may be going down as well, so it may end up being, impacting it down that much. The new bond goes up a little bit in the next fiscal year, so this helps to reduce it, so it kinda offsets some of it.
What, what is the interest rate on the one you're refinancing versus the one you hope to get?
I don't really know the, I don't know if I brought the comparison with me of the interest rates. All I know is, you know, generally, the State House notes are a good interest rate, but this bond, because interest rates are down right now, is less than the State House note, and the financial advisor said to me that, you know, you need to hop on this right now before it changes, because this is an opportunity to reduce your debt, and it's also an opportunity to help lower the taxes.
Hold on, let's see, Councilor Kuzinski?
Just a quick question on the, oh, lost it, sorry. Please go ahead, I'll catch it, sorry, apologize.
No problem, I hope you remember what you asked.
Not feeling well tonight, sorry.
So generally, it will potentially, it will reduce taxes, but, and by doing this, are we, are we opting in to a new term of, of a loan, or is it, are we, are we just replacing the current term, paying it off, just at the same amount of time, but just with, with lower payments essentially?
I don't know if it goes out a year or two further, we're only a couple of years into the State House note right now.
Okay, but we're not adding like ten years?
So it's about a similar schedule, time-wise.
It was a simple question, had to do with the cost of refinancing, how much money does, do we, do we pay, imagine it's a fraction of what the savings will be, and it would make sense to go ahead with this, but just was curious what the costs are of refinance, there must be some fees that are, get paid to the representatives who advise us.
Small, small fee, and if there's a premium in the bond, then we can apply that toward the costs, which is what we did with the Maple School, so the Maple School premium covered all the costs.
So this is a twenty-year payment schedule that we have with this, and so the seven hundred and twenty-two every year approximately, ninety, in the nineties, pretty much every year, that comes out to about one point eight million dollars over twenty years?
Well, the debt schedule changes every year, the interest goes down, but the, the savings stays at about ninety-three thousand every year, compared to what the other borrowing was, yes.
So we could do this again if the rates even went lower?
If we had something that was eligible to refinance.
Answers my questions, sounds like a good plan.
Do you want me to read this?
Yeah, we probably need to, yep.
Val, do I need to read the ordered and further ordered completely here, that's on your letter here?
Or do we just make a motion to accept it?
Do you have a motion?
Do it as a motion, so it's in the record.
I know, but I have to read this, alright. I move that the council accept, and the order that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to provide for the sale and issuance of refunding bonds pursuant to Chapter Forty-Four, Section Twenty-One A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority at one time or from time to time to refund all or any portion of the city's outstanding general obligation state-qualified school bonds dated August thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, and that the proceeds of the refunding bonds issued pursuant to this order shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium interest on the bonds of the city to be refunded and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds, and that the treasurer is authorized to execute such documents as may be necessary and desirable to carry out this transaction, including one or more refunding trust agreements with a bank or trust company. It is further ordered that any premium received by the city upon the sale of any refunding bonds approved by this order, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Chapter Forty-Four, Section Twenty of the general laws. I move that we approve. Second.
Motion is second to approve the Chapter Forty-Four, Section Twenty-One A of the general laws authorization to issue refunding bonds, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Okay. Anything, Mayor, did you have anything else for Mayor Communications? We'll move into reports of standing committees, finances first, Councilor Riss?
Yes, the Finance Committee met and approved some different appropriations in the council budget. I'd first like to talk about the council budget, which we must approve this evening, as we're a little late in getting it to the mayor, I hope she forgives us. Anyway, as you can see, it's generally a similar budget, but there is one major addition from the President, Coniff has asked for two thousand twenty-five education and training budget line, which I don't think it existed last year, to be added to the budget, we're going to meet with the mayor and see if we can convince the mayor to approve that, and I'll let Councilor Coniff speak to that.
So the reason I added that was, several of us this year did end up going to the MMA convention, some of us for longer periods of terms than others, and for the short time that I was there, it became apparent to me that this is a really valuable time for us and really important, and we have historically talked about funding an education or training line at a pretty nominal amount, which was completely insignificant and not really valuable to anything we would ever take in training. So I took the registration fee, and I believe that I multiplied it by nine, and that is what this amount is for, and we would, we would primarily use it for the MMA, but that is not to say that if there was something else that came up, we could also approve that, what I would like to do is have everybody do something from a training perspective, and this would allow us to, to do that, because none of the training anymore is cheap, so that was the purpose behind putting it on the budget.
The other items on the budget, there is no increase in salaries, there is a slight increase in the clerical salary, and a slight increase in the advertising due to the possibility of adding, you know, every time we do a bond, we have to advertise and we have to pay for it, it's legally required by the state. The other thing that I'm very happy that we actually did, that the mayor nicely put out mission statements for all the department heads, we did not take advantage of this last year or the last two years, we did this year. I put in a few things, President Coniff put in a lot of things, especially in the goals area. As we approve the budget, you're also approving this narrative, so if you took a look at it, and you have any questions?
Did you have a question, Councilor?
I just wanted to follow up on the council president's comments about the education line for the council. I think it's a fabulous idea to be able to support the counselors, to be able to go to various educational trainings. We wanna support our staff, our employees, the mayor, in these efforts to become educated at state level and even national level, to be aware of issues, to make the interactions with others who are doing the same things that we're doing. I think it benefits the entire city. I was an advocate last year for that, or the year before, every year, pretty much, and, and I think that primarily we've had one hundred dollars in that line item, and I, it, it helps a little, even a little bit helps to defray and keep the counselors to even dig into their pocket and get more to, to help, but it does help a little bit, and I think the mayor would do well by the city, I think, by giving us something. I would advocate for something.
We're off to send your letters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your support for it.
Anyone else? Oh, Councilor Zerret?
I just, I agree, but I think this is a place where the summation of voices is important. I think in any other professional capacity, people are given monies for professional development or continuing education, and having attended the MMA with a few of my colleagues, some longer than others, I'm glad you, you made it there.
For the record, she was sick.
It was invaluable experience, and to interact with colleagues and learn new skills and attend lectures and new information that it can bring back to our city, so yes, thank you, and I hope this is something that makes its way into the budget.
You have to get past Bill Lynch. Councilor Gomez?
Thank you, President Coniff. I just wanna add, the MMA is not the only one here in training, it's a bunch of other organizations out there that we can reach, and we can take advantage of it too, that's not the only place, I just wanna put in there.
Absolutely. Okay, Councilor Riss?
Then I move that we, the city council approve the budget as submitted by the Finance Committee and the budget narrative this evening to be sent to the mayor for her approval. Second.
Motion is second to approve the city council budget and to forward that on to the mayor for her approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Little business, I would like to make a motion to establish a public hearing at the next meeting in these chambers for the following, ninety-three thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-three cents for the shortfall in the police department's FY-20 budget, three hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred dollars for design and oversight of the Union Street Corridor project, and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents to purchase two police cruisers. I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for those. Second.
Motion to amend one of the amounts that you put out there, you said ninety-three thousand eight hundred and sixty, it's ninety-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine.
That's what's on my.
I understand. So motion to amend to the eight, ninety-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Okay. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Was that for the amendment?
That was for the amendment, so now.
The motion to send everything to public hearing.
To send it to the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye. I also have the two new businesses, items, actually it's one, if I, am I correct that, Madam President, you wanted the MGL Chapter Forty-Four B CPA exemption to go to finance?
So, yes, so I do.
I'll make the motion and then he can discuss.
Yep, okay.
I'll make the motion that we send Councilor Kuzinski's request to accept MGL Chapter Forty-Four B, Section Three E One to finance. Second.
Motion is second, Councilor Kuzinski, do you have any summarizing information?
This had to do with the CPA being slightly adjusted in order to benefit both seniors over sixty and for low-income folks who owned property, so if you're low-income and you meet the standard, the financial standards, and you're sixty or older and meet certain income eligibility requirements, to be low or median income, be considered lower median income in the area, then you would be eligible for having no CPA tax for you. The rest of the community certainly would be able to support the CPA, so that would remain in, in effect. I think the benefit here is that there would be a small recognition to those who are low-income and low and moderate income to have some moderate, small amount of return of, or lowering of their taxes. It's not an attempt to take the CPA and remove the CPA, the CPA does wonderful things for our community, I think this is recognition of where we are as a city. This acceptance, my understanding is, would take, be, we would then take it to finance, come back to the committee, if approved, it would have to go on the ballot.
That's correct.
So that the, it would go to the voters eventually to decide if this is something that makes sense for our community, but I certainly think it's worthy of vigorous discussion.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mayor?
If you have a question, yes, I'm moving of it.
I have a comment, because I wanted people to know that my comments about the CPA had nothing to do with this, I am very much in favor of this exemption.
We won't talk about that right now.
Can I ask a clarifying question about the proposal?
Sure.
Do you know approximately if this was, if this was, had a full-throated adoption, how much we may lose from CPA contributions?
It depends on the signs up, it's hard to know.
Okay, there's no, okay.
We have a motion, a second on the floor, to move this to the Finance Committee, move to the CPA exemption for low-income housing and low-moderate senior housing to Finance Committee, all those in favor?
Aye. The last comment is our meeting on the twenty, will be on the twenty-sixth, a regular Wednesday meeting, but it will be changed to five P.M. due to the fact, there's a major public hearing in these chambers that evening for the Department of Public Works rate increases, which is at six, so our meeting will be five P.M. in room one on the twenty-sixth for Finance, and that concludes.
Thank you, we are now moving on to Public Safety, Councilor Gomez?
Thank you, President Coniff, I just wanna ask in front of a motion, ninety-day extension for the pedestrian safety review?
Second.
Motion second to extend the pedestrian safety review ninety days, all those in favor?
Aye.
And our next meeting is gonna be March third at six P.M., room number one, and that concludes.
Okay, appointments, Councilor Kuzinski?
Yes. We had actually quite a large attendance at our Appointments Committee meeting today, and met some wonderful people who wanna volunteer their, their work to the city for various committees. First ones that we'd met with were Eileen Myers, and Gail Cannon was not able to attend, however. Both folks have been in the community for some time, I think are fairly well-known to many people. The appointment is for the Charity Funds Committee, which is, I understand, to be made up of approximately four wills that had been donated to the city for taking care of those who were poor and in need and worthy of their, of support, so the collection of folks got, had been managing those funds. Essentially, my understanding is that the figures amount to about fifty dollars per port, per person, the total funds amount to about a thousand dollars, and so we learned all about that. Barbara LeBumbard is one of the folks who, actually the only person I understand who is on the committee now, and I think it's great to be able to add some additional folks to the committee, maybe get some additional support and ideas and inter- get some additional support and ideas and interaction. So Eileen Myers and Gail Cannon are the two individuals. Eileen actually had been working with the Helping Hand Society and.
Gail was on that, too.
And Gail is also on the Helping Hand Society. So they have some, which is a much larger fund, and so good background. I think they were excellent persons to be appointed to the committee. The vote, two to zero, to recommend that their term be, that they have a term through December 31, 2022.
Okay. In the form of a motion?
In the form of a motion. I would like to recommend that we appoint both Eileen Myers and Gail Cannon to the charity funds committee.
Second?
Motion is second to appoint Eileen Myers and Gail Cannon to the charity funds committee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes.
We were fortunate to meet with Samantha Pliska, who has been, been recommended for appointment to the Main Street Cemetery Commission. She actually runs two cemeteries for the city already, the two city, the city cemeteries. So this one here was kind of a natural to go on to that commission. And she was also recommended two to zero by the committee for appointment. So in the form of a motion, I would like to recommend the appointment of Samantha Pliska to the Main Street Cemetery Commission through December 31, 2022.
Second?
Motion is second to approve Samantha Pliska to the Main Street Cemetery Commission? Is that what it is?
Cemetery Commission, yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes.
We did have the, a fourth person, Lindsey Alterkin. 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 She did say it was Alterkin. Is her name? She to the zoning board of appeals. And she was very excited, had been a member of our community for about a year and was very much thinking of being, finding ways to integrate the three sections of the downtown, the main street. She spoke about Cottage Street and Union Street, spoke about residents in the community and the various kinds of disputes that oftentimes do come about, and the zoning board of appeals. So she sounded very well informed. She also is an attorney, not a zoning attorney, but an attorney. And I think that always helps to have some additional folks with some legal training because sometimes there are legal issues. So we had voted two to zero to recommend Lindsey Alterkin in the form of a motion for the zoning board of appeals, December 31, 2022.
Second?
Motion and a second to approve Lindsey Alterkin?
Alterkin. Good pronunciation.
To the zoning board and appeals commission. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes.
Delayed in my eyes. Oh.
We are also bringing forward the reappointment to the telecommunications advisory committee, the name of Jason Miranda, for a term expiration December 31, 2022. He had, of course, been on the committee and Councilor Peak had strongly recommended that he be retained for that committee. The vote was two to zero, and I move that we make that appointment through December 31, 2022.
Second?
Motion is second to approve Jason Miranda to the telecom committee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes.
We did have the name to put forth for recommendation to be moved to the appointments committee, Patricia Wojcik, to the council on aging, with a term expiration 12/31/2022.
Second?
Motion is second to approve Patricia Wojcik to the council on aging, 12/31/2022. To move it, I'm sorry.
To move to appointments, yes.
To move to appointments. I apologize. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes. Next meeting?
Next meeting, March 4 at 5:30 PM.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That concludes.
Ordinance. Councilor Zerret.
The only one.
You're it.
Thank you, President Coniff. Just for clarification, did we, if I remember correctly, did we remove the quadricycle ordinance last time?
I thought we did.
Okay.
I thought we had.
Okay. I just, we did not discuss that. We did discuss Councilor Kuzinski's engine brake ordinance proposal. We had some great input from our bureau and Sergeant Ross, who discussed engine brakes as well as other commercial vehicles. And we also had some input from, oh, I'm forgetting his name, but a gentleman who's familiar with, with engine brakes and the operation.
Scott McCarthy.
Thank you. I knew it was Scott. Scott McCarthy. So there was some good feedback there, and the ultimate resolution for now was to have some more education being done with local trucking businesses around these complaints to make them aware that, specifically in the neighborhood of Florence Road, that some neighbors are unhappy with both the noise and the speeding, and that the police will look into more enforcement and see if that solves the issue. Certainly, we're open to continuing to discuss it. It has not, it has been continued. I think we agreed for a month. We'll get back to it and see how things improve, if there is more enforcement and awareness of the issue. Councilor Kuzinski, do you think that?
It's a pretty good summarization.
Okay. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Remain on the agenda and hope to get some feedback from the folks.
Note, what was interesting was that, at least from the experts in attendance, Sergeant Ross and Mr. McCarthy, is that the noise that people were perceiving as being secondary to engine brakes has more to do with muffler systems or potentially modified muffler systems. So that's neither here nor there, but the police will get more involved with that. We, I do not believe we discussed anything else on our agenda, and there does not look like there's anything to extend at this time. So I would like to make a motion to move the new business, the reduction elimination of plastics, to the ordinance committee.
Second?
Motion is second to move the proposed ordinance entitled Reduction Elimination of Plastics to the ordinance committee. Any discussion?
I have a few comments.
Okay. Go.
Do you want people, is that okay? I'd like to introduce this.
Go.
That's all right. So you all have the cover letter. I'll quickly enumerate what this ordinance will accomplish. It will accomplish the complete elimination of bin plastic bags, which I believe has been discussed by the city council before. Currently, we have an ordinance for recycling of these, but it turns out that the, A, it's not being necessarily well-complied with, and B, the means to recycle these bags is not very readily available. And in general, recycling is becoming problematic because all the recycling is being shipped to China. China's moving it to other third-world countries, and they're being, they're not being necessarily recycled, they're being incinerated. As I mentioned in the cover letter, 136 cities and towns have already enacted plastic bag bans. Neighboring to us, North Hampton has. Southampton, at least Big Y has, I believe they may have ordinance as well. Amherst has. And then the other thing that this will address will be restrictions on polystyrene foodwares, adhering and replacing those with biodegradable or compostable alternatives that will adhere to very strict guidelines that are spelled out in the ordinance. And I can, we'll get into that more in the committee level. And then also, the ordinance also calls for plastic straws on a request only. It does not require that businesses get rid of plastic straws altogether, but it does require that they only be available on request and encourages them to use biodegradable or compostable alternatives. I have some, some statistics if that's, if I may, if it pleases you.
Sure. You'll be repeating this at the committee level, I assume.
Just, so, okay, I'll give you the Rears Digest version, or the Cliff Notes, or Monarch Notes. I used both in high school. This is a problem. And I don't disagree with some of the comments that were made earlier on, that we do need to think bigger, but this isn't, this is something we could tackle on the municipal level. 91% of plastics, of all plastics, end up in the landfills in the environment. They don't get recycled and they don't get reused. They don't break down, they break up, and they spread to our environment. They are ingested by wildlife, they accumulate in the ground and in the water, and they become microplastics, as our friend Jose said earlier, who's no longer here, but I appreciate his work. And these microplastics cause a wide variety of health problems to us, to both endangered and non-encaged animal species. Up to 12.7 metric tons of plastics make their way into our oceans every year. This is a big problem. And so, yes, we have to think on the bigger level about the, the Amazon packaging and other, other non-biodegradable and compostable plastics that are brought into our community, but this is something that we can, we can do here. And something I'm really excited about with this, too, if it moves forward, is I just found out today, and I'm kind of embarrassed I didn't know before, but PJ Neiver, who was up here and advocated for this, has been very helpful as well. We have this wonderful program called Bag Share, where they reuse materials that can be made into reusable bags. The brewery bags and feedbags, which are all food-grade. This is a program actually locally, but also right here in East Hampton. They have a workshop where they are taking these and making them into free bags that are available for the community. And it's something that if, if this ordinance is successful, I'd really like to see that as a big initiative that going forward, to challenge people to sit down, try to make 1,000 reusable bags in a day. And going forward, it will accommodate people who are concerned about the expenses of buying reusable bags as well. So that's a really exciting part of this. And someone, I don't know if it was Mr. Corcello that mentioned education, yes, it's a big part of this. It's reeducating our community about the dangers of plastics and what, and what they present. The proposals that have passed, it would go into effect a year after passage. That would give us plenty of time to educate the community, discuss, you know, have, have learning sessions for businesses certainly, to have the health agent do their work in terms of educating people. And there are hardship clauses in here to both extend that time as well as if, for whatever reason, there is a, there is not a biodegradable or compostable option that someone uses, you can apply to continue using that. Councilor Rothschild has been kind enough to sign on to co-sponsor this and has been doing some excellent work in the community, kind of canvassing local businesses. And I want to say thank you in advance for your support, and then turn it over to her for a few comments.
Thank you, Owen. And I want to thank Owen for his, he's been working on this for many months before I was even on the council, so, but I'm heck excited for the opportunity to co-sponsor. So what I've been doing over the past week is I canvassed many businesses on Cottage Street. It was Sunday, so you weren't open, Corcellos, but I, I stopped in and just talked to business owners. And I also went to Union Bistro in Big E. And I have to say that the, our business owners in East Hampton are on board for this type of thing. They're ready, including to me, including. And what was really exciting was, is how everyone is already thinking about it. People are already making changes in their stores and being conscientious, as Vincent mentioned, how he's being conscientious in his store. I talked to store owners who, on Cottage Street, they say, what they do now is they don't, they don't offer bags. They say, do you need a bag? It's not a default that they give a bag. You have places like Union Bistro, they're selling their cup, and then every time you go in and get a coffee, you get 50% discount. So I'm just promoting that because I definitely take advantage of that with my coffee drinks there. But it's encouraging me to carry my cup around. And actually, one day, it was a Tuesday, they weren't open, and I took it into a different store and got coffee in my reusable cup. So it's changing my behavior. So what I see about this, this ban is that, yeah, it's not going to solve the problems of the world, but it's a way of bringing our community together and getting excited together about doing what we can do here in East Hampton. And I think the spirit of any plastic ban should really be the reduction of all packaging whenever possible. So recycling, as Vincent mentioned, as Owen mentioned, only 9% of, 9 to 8% of plastics are actually even recycled. So when we throw them in our recycling bin, it's really actually not being recycled. So first thing we want to do is reduce. And if we reduce our use of, of single-use plastics or single-use containers of any kind, this is also going to be a benefit to our businesses because they don't need to be paying for these containers. So the more we go around and carry our travel coffee cup or even carry our own utensils, that's less that these business owners need to be buying this packages, this packaging that's thrown away. So I think this gives us an excellent opportunity as a community to come together and do our part and, and try to take it to the next progressive level. But I think all politics is local, and it's important that we start here. So thanks again for bringing this forward.
Thanks for supporting me. May I add one thing, too?
Sure.
I just wanted to point to something really important that appeared with it.
This was the shortened version, by the way. Is that what you?
Do you know me?
Yeah, we didn't have the long version.
I just wanted to point out that as available in the packet and publicly available is that the Sierra Club was kind enough to sign on and approve of this ordinance, which I think is very important. There's a few other groups I've been in discussion with, and I can't say that they approve of it yet, but there, but as, I'll keep updated as I have more discussions there. But that was really great for me to hear, and there's a letter that accompanies that from Deb Pasternak, who's the, the local chapter director in Massachusetts. So we're on the right path with this.
So then I'm going to answer the two.
You realize this is going to committee and we will have public hearings?
Two seconds. Just two seconds. The reason I went to the businesses was so that they wouldn't be blindsided. And also to say, to make, I emailed them all the ordinance that I talked to, the people I talked to, and to, and they, people did express, even though they're on board, they did express concerns with certain points of it. So I've been, I've been told them that this is beginning of the process and that their engagement, we want this to not be a burden but a benefit to our community. So I just want to say it's the beginning of the process, and we want everyone to stay involved and help us with it.
Great. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to move this to the ordinance committee. Any further discussion related to the motion?
Just kidding.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes.
Madam President, I have a request for this committee.
Councilor Wrist?
I would like, I know, Owen, you're not the chair, but I would like, if possible, because you have a lot of old business and you frequently don't know what you're going to get to. It would be helpful for the community if we knew what you were going to talk to at any one public ordinance committee meeting, and especially this one, I would like to come to it. So in some way, if you can designate on your future agendas, this will be talked to tonight. That would be very helpful to me and the public.
Councilor Zerret?
Agreed. And so at the next meeting, I was going to make a few requests of the chair as to dedicating some time, especially to this topic, which I think a lot of people will be interested in, and as well as trying to parse out better when we're going to address some of the other very valuable other items on our agenda.
I'd just like to know one next one.
Absolutely. So we'll establish that next time. And then, in that vein, we are meeting next Wednesday, the 26th, at 6:00 PM. And we'll also be meeting the 10th, March 10th, at 6:00 PM as well. And I'll get you more information about the specific agenda that has to be discussed at those. That's a great point.
I would just love the clerk to be able to highlight what you're going to talk to when you send out, when she sends out the committee agendas. It would be great.
Problem is, I have to be told.
Yes, that's why I'm bringing it up.
I will make a request to the, I think it's a very, a very thoughtful point. I'll make a request to the chair. We intended to do that at our next Wednesday meeting. Thank you.
Okay. So, so next Wednesday's agenda will be?
Everything.
Everything.
What time is it?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
Sorry. I have to tell you that that's the major public hearing for the DPW. You sure you want to do that? Sewer and water, it might be that the councilors who want to attend that, your meeting, want to attend that one, too, so.
Why don't we leave it as is for now, and I'll talk to Chairperson Derby. I can't, we already said that at the last meeting. He's not here, and I don't, so.
When do the agendas come out, Barbara?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
We'll just have to leave it as is then.
But they can be amended.
Okay. All right. We'll go with.
Does the public see the agendas and get geared up? I, for one, would like to see a different time for the, for the, for the ordinance, if possible. So I would advocate strongly that we, being able to attend the Board of Public Works.
Yeah, I would like to give Counselor Zerret the opportunity to meet with Counselor Derby, who is out of the country right now, and as the clerk mentioned, we can amend it. We'll go in with the six o'clock, and then, like, what, Monday? We have until Monday to amend it?
You know, it can be, I mean, I think.
The day before.
People should have as much time as possible.
Right.
I thought we needed forty-eight hours.
No, not, I mean, it's posted, but then you can amend the agendas.
Okay. So I don't know when Counselor Derby's getting back.
I don't, I could try, I could try communicating with him. I, I'll let you know.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
We can certainly, I know Counselor Kuzinski, you have a couple items on the agenda of interest, that you submitted and of interest to you, and we can certainly, I, well, I don't want to make any promises, but I'll, I'll talk to, I can't really indicate what's going to be on the agenda either, in the absence of talking to him, and I can't really do that outside of meeting anyways.
So we'll put everything, and then we'll, we'll put everything in there if we need to amend it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to him.
Okay.
I guess we put the public on notice that there might not be, there may be a change, very well a change it with the ordinance, which we currently have scheduled for the twenty-sixth at six.
Well, I could tell you this, if we do meet, and it doesn't change, I will make a request to the chair that we do not discuss the topics that you submitted, so that you can be present for a meeting that, that is satisfactory. Thus concludes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Property Committee. I've lost track of who is the.
I'm putting on a, I'm putting on a different hat. We have not met since I last reported out. We are meeting next Thursday at six P.M. That's the twenty-seventh. We'll be discussing mostly the dog park proposal. Apropos of that, I'm not sure if this can be done, someone can tell me if, if we can, I found out from Director Mason that the date of the proposed public hearing for the grant, to approve the grant request, which is the eighteenth, March eighteenth, he will not be available. And so if it's allowable, I'd like to make a motion to move that public hearing to the first meeting now in April.
Second?
Motion second to move the dog park discussion public hearing to April, what was the, what's the first meeting?
First.
First, is it, really? April first, oh, boy. April first meeting. Yes, that, thank you. That's the word I was looking for. Any discussion?
I have been taking Mr. Boyle's comments at our last meeting very seriously. He had come to us and spoken about having a place for the dog park that may not be the best place in the community for the dog park, to being at a section of the, the community way out. I have come across some statistics, I think if you look at Ann Arbor, their dog park, they had placed a dog park at the edges of their community, only to find out that really they needed to have a dog park be in a centralized location in the community, because the greatest predictor of use of a park had to do with, I'm getting, I'm getting there, the greatest predictor was, was distance. So I will be voting no.
No, please, yeah. We're not going to have discussions like that up here. The motion is to extend it to April first. We're not going to discuss whether we like it, we don't like it, we approve it, we have, the motion is, are we going to move it?
So the question.
So that's the question on the table.
I will abstain.
Okay. We have.
No further questions?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Abstained? And opposed? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for understanding.
Oh, I understand.
Okay.
I believe also, just some housekeeping, again, I think both these items were extended at the last meeting. I know specifically we, we extended the inventory of city-owned property, but I don't remember if we, if extended the city, the dog park, so just, does anyone remember if we did? I don't know.
I think you need to extend both of them.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to, I think I definitely did a ninety-day extension for the city-owned property piece, but I'll make another motion.
We did.
Okay. The dog park, I don't remember if we did, I'll just make a motion at this time to extend, to request a ninety-day extension on that item.
Second?
Which item?
The dog park.
Okay. So motion is second to extend the date for the municipal dog park from, for ninety days. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Is that an abstain, or?
The date, the, I just wish a little.
To my recollection, the other agenda item was extended last time.
Okay.
Okay.
Thus concludes. Oh, yes, I already, I indicated, yeah, I saw your bar next meeting. Thus concludes.
Okay. Thank you. Rules and Government Relations, Counselor Peak is ill, so I'll ask Counselor Riss to do the summary.
We did meet, and we discussed three items. The rule changes, we will continue to discuss on the twenty-seventh. I believe we did, said five o'clock that evening, am I correct?
Yep.
Five o'clock that evening on the twenty-seventh in Room One, which is a Thursday. I would like to bring forward the memo of understanding that the school superintendent requested of us. This is really, as we all say, a no-brainer, because it's a way for the school department to bring, to get reimbursed up to twenty percent for the cost of transporting foster students placed outside of East Hampton's limits. Last year, and Counselor Coniff helped me if I don't have the correct numbers, we, the school department spent eighty-six thousand dollars to transport these students, and it was not in their budget, so they had to scramble to find the money. If we pass this, and it has to be passed by March first, they'll be able to recover twenty percent, if I'm correct, the last quarter's payments, just the last quarter, but also twenty percent of this year's costs in this fiscal year, and that's already at fifty-six thousand dollars. So any way we can get reimbursement for another unfunded mandate, I think is a good thing. So we all voted in the Rules Committee three to zero to, to do this, and I'm prepared to do a motion unless anybody has any questions.
Okay.
I move that in accordance with MGL Chapter Forty-four, Section Seventy, the city council, with approval of the mayor, authorize the East Hampton School Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding for the purposes of Title Four dash E reimbursement.
Second?
Motion second to approve the memorandum of understanding for the purposes of Title Five dash E reimbursement. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
I have some new business from Counselor Kuzinski, which we've decided to move to rules. I move that proposal from Counselor Kuzinski for a senior volunteer work-off program be moved to the Rules and Government Relations Committee for review.
Wouldn't go to finance?
No.
So.
Somebody second that.
Second, then we'll discuss.
Second.
So you have a two-pronged request here. One is to accept the, the MGL, which we already have done in twenty thirteen.
We've done, that's, that's good.
So that's been done. The second request is to create an ad hoc committee. That committee, per your proposal, would bring forth a, an idea, a proposal, a financial impact, they would have all the ideas, that would go to finance, but the creation of the committee, I thought, would be worthy of us discussing in rules.
In rules, that makes perfect sense, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
Do you have a second?